Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 24th, and it is indeed six o'clock. Um, excuse me, Karen, could you please do roll call?
Councilmember Shirley?
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Here.
Mayor Kerr?
Here. So we're all in attendance. Uh, moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, Beth Fergon, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I do believe Reverend Hallam is, uh, with us this evening for the invocation.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Almighty God, thank you for your presence here with us right here and right now. Please bless everyone here, either physically or virtually with, uh, your wisdom. And, uh, may all decisions and all actions and all thoughts and words be, uh, words of, uh, respect and goodwill and, uh, many differences be, be handled respectfully and lovingly. And, uh, we thank you once again for your presence here. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So we have a fun item, a number four introduction of new city manager, John Gertin. Uh, it has been almost a year since our previous city manager went on a leave of absence, then did not return at the end of that leave. It has been a year of great change for the city. We will be recognizing Jeff Hoynes and Chris Borquinn for their roles, but we also, uh, need to recognize Karen Manami, who deserves our thanks for managing kind of the change with grace. I would also like to thank the council for supporting my idea of including residents, businesses, and city staff in the hiring process. In addition to myself and councilperson Gagliotti, the Hiring Committee included residents John Uwe Rommel from the North Side, Andrew Clark from the South Side, Louise Getzel from the Oaks, and our veterinarian, Dr. Greg Marsalais. Uh, from the city staff, Chris Borquinn and Karen Manami were also on the team. We helped create the project description and conducted the first interview narrowing down candidates. The council then did the final interviews. All of this result work, excuse me, has resulted in Mr. John Gertin being selected as our new city manager. He rose to the top of the selection with his county and city leadership experience. He began on August 10th and has hit the ground running. He will be setting up a safe meet and greet so all the residents can meet him. But in, I would like to introduce you to John Gertin. John, would you like to say a few words?
Okay. Uh, gratefully Randy's here to help me so I can remember to unmute myself. Um, yeah, I would just like to say I'm really grateful to the council and to the community for this opportunity. Um, I've been on the peninsula resident for 27 years, raised three kids, put them through schools. Uh, my youngest just graduated from PG High School, so we're soon to be empty nesters. I'm looking forward to that chapter in our life and, uh, just really looking forward to this opportunity to work with you all and with the community of Delray Oaks. Uh, there's a lot happening in this little town of ours. There's a lot of opportunity, a lot of excitement, and, uh, I, I have to tell you, it's been, it's only been two weeks. It's been a fabulous two weeks. Everybody has been so nice and easy to work with and really eager to help. Um, so I'm really looking forward to it and really excited about the great things that are going to happen here in this community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Welcome.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to public comments. Um, before we get going, I, um, also want to reiterate such as Reverend Hallam, um, that, uh, please, if you do choose to share your comments with the council this evening, please do so with respect. We can have different ideas, uh, on items without personal attacks or being derogatory. Um, additionally, last month, we had a lot of, uh, folks that were new to council meetings and quite a few that are new to council meetings online. So I wanted to share a few things for those of you who may be unfamiliar with the process. I'd like to start with Randy. Could you please explain how to raise your hand for public comment?
Alright, uh, so on the Zoom client, if you click on reactions, you will see the raise hand button there. Uh, for Windows, Alt-Y shortcut will raise and lower your hand. For Macs, Options plus Y will also raise your hand. Uh, for the phone, it's, it's star nine to raise and lower your hand.
Thank you, Randy. Okay. A few other items. Um, everyone will be muted until you're called upon. Uh, you will have one opportunity to share your thoughts on each agenda item for three minutes. You will not be allowed a second three minutes for additional thoughts on the same item. And although we all may be in our living rooms, this is not a dialogue. Questions you pose will be written down and may be answered or referred to staff after all public comments are made. And comments are to be addressed to the council, not the public or any person in particular. So on that, let's go out for public comment. And I see Gary Krieger.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that, uh, what I'm about to say will come up again later, but I was the one that put this out there now because I know a lot of people are interested in it. But there was a Citizens Action Group, uh, meeting last night. And I just wanted to recognize that David Kimball is going to be stepping down as president. He's been president for many years and he's done just outstanding work. And we all know that. We've benefited from it. And I just wanted to recognize that, you know, more timely matter that he is, uh, is going to be assuming a new role. He's been, of course, assistant of Barbara, his wife. They're a great team. They're, they've led us, uh, through some many impressive events, annual picnics, so ice cream socials, Santa. And David was the driving force behind, you know, all this stuff coming off and smoothly and a lot of fun for the city. And we look forward to the post-pandemic era when we can start to bring these back. And so, you know, as in this office with a stellar record of making DRO a better place, I just wanted to recognize that and also like to thank Kristen Clark for stepping up and assuming the role as president. And I know that great things are ahead for our little city. So just wanted to get that out there for people who didn't know. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Um, I see Supervisor Wendy Root Ask You.
Hello. Hi. Um, I just wanted to briefly drop into, uh, Delray Oaks, uh, City Council meeting to introduce myself. I am, uh, your newly elected District Four County Supervisor. Um, for those of you who I haven't had a chance to meet yet personally, I wanted just to let you know who I am and let you know, um, some of the things that my team and I are working on. Um, we do have two offices, uh, one at our, uh, in, in the location in Marina that where we've been for the past 12 years, and another in Salinas, and we're continuing to work virtually. So if you have questions or need any assistance with county services or resources, please do reach out. Um, the team is, uh, is, is it online daily, whether we're, uh, calling in from Salinas or our living rooms or our home offices or the Marina office. Um, I, um, actively trying to build, uh, keep communication, uh, headed out into the community. We've got, um, lots of social media where we're pushing information about what the county is doing out as well as an email newsletter, um, and a website, WendyRootAskYou.com, where, uh, we're posting information about county resources, um, and services. Um, most of my time since taking office in January has been spent on COVID response efforts that the county is really leading on. Um, we've worked incredibly hard to expand and to preserve free COVID testing availability on the peninsula. We've been able to maintain a free state-sponsored COVID testing site, um, in Seaside, uh, for, for, for some time. That site is actually, this week will be expanding its hours, um, to be open from, uh, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And that's at the Salvation Army location on Contra Costa in Seaside. So please take advantage of that. We are continuing to work to expand additional pop-up rapid testing options. Um, I'm thrilled to say that, uh, the District Four community has been, uh, significantly, um, engaged in vaccination efforts. So thank you to everyone who's been vaccinated. If you have questions or if the city needs help reaching any of your residents with information, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. And I wanted to also share, um, a few of the big wins for District Four in our budget this year. Um, and these are things that really, um, the county does in partnership with our cities. Um, and so we've been working in partnership with Delray Oaks as well as all five District Four cities. We have, uh, nearly $30 million in rental and utility assistance. So if you have any Delray Oaks residents who need support, um, getting their past rent due, we can support them. We, uh, expanded our Esperanza Care Health Access Program. We're offering free access to all county parks. We've got, um, $750,000 dedicated to securing a permanent veterans hall, um, and so much more. So I look forward to working with each of you on City Council and with you, Mayor Kerr, um, and with all the residents. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself and say hello. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining us this evening. That's special. Um, alright, next person I show Tom. Tom? Did we lose Tom?
I think I'm unmuted now.
There you go.
Okay, this is Tom Raveli, a 34, 34-year resident and homeowner of a dear place in the city. I am the proponent of the ballot initiative in opposition to the four dog trail through the city of Delray Oaks. We are not opposed to the concept of the four dog, Fortag trails in general. We are opposed to the tunnel under 218, the intrusion into the frog pond area, and running the trail through our city streets without any formal support by the residents of those streets or by our citizens at large. Our reasonable goal for the ballot petition is 600 signatures from registered voters, which is a plurality in an election with only 1,223 total voters, and that is if they all vote. We have already, we already have enough signatures to sustain the petition. We are just going for 600. We are, we are already close to achieving this goal. Negative comments against this project are well documented in the final environmental impact report as far back as December 2019. It is a well-known fact that this project is unpopular with the Stelray Oaks residents, and to assert anything else is either disingenuous or an outright falsehood. This is why we are easily gathering so many petition signatures going door to door, asking for a vote by the people on the Fortag project. We are hoping that the city council will resolve the issue by negotiating a plan that is acceptable to our citizens. We are informing you that if that does not happen, we will be submitting the petition. And since we canvassed only registered voters, it will most definitely be sustained, which will force a vote at the latest in the November 2022 election or sooner in a special election. I respectfully submit that if the council approves the plan as currently proposed and the people vote it down after it is near or fully completed, it will be a catastrophe for our city and its morale. We hope a majority of the council is right now legitimately trying to address the concerns of our citizens. Please bear in mind what I have said and good luck with that endeavor. We are rooting for a favorable outcome. You are our representatives and the city is watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Excuse me, Vicky Lucido.
Hi, this, this is actually Frank Lucido. I, I, I'm using my wife's computer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I would just like to echo Gary's comments about David Kimball. His work has been stellar and he's made our city proud. Um, can't say enough about what David has done. And, um, on, on one hand, it's sad that he's stepping down, but if we hear that Kristen Clark is stepping up, we're going to be in good hands. So that's, um, that's really good news for our city that we have people like David and Kristen who do what they do for us, and I'm looking forward to our, our post-COVID gatherings. So, uh, thanks Gary for bringing that up. And, uh, that's about all I want to say is thank you, David, and, and welcome, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Kathy?
Oh, thank you. I think I'm unmuted now. This is Kathy Pelzolo. I live on Angeles Way. I think many of you know my, um, thoughts and opinion on the Fortag Trail. I'm really urging the city council to reconsider the plan as is and to keep what the residents, um, want in mind. As Mr. Raveli said, we don't want it to go down the city streets without the approval of the residents on those streets. We don't want the intrusion into the frog pond. Connecting a food source such as Safeway to the park in Delray Oaks and to the frog pond is really a recipe for disaster for the unhoused homeless transient community. Um, this project is going to cost the city money to maintain money that the city doesn't. When we brought up that this could potentially increase our taxes, we were told, oh, no, 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 it can't increase your taxes because you're already maxed out. So if we're already maxed out, why are we taking on any additional, um, tasks that are going to cost us money? Anything that's, you know, is going to just cost us more money at this point is kind of ridiculous for this city. Um, I'd like to welcome our new city manager. Um, I am a little bit familiar with him and really happy that he's with us. Um, but my main point today is to really, really ask the council members to listen to your constituency and to hear what we are saying. We, the residents of Delray Oaks, don't want this as planned. You know, implore you guys to reconsider 218, some alternatives, and remember.
Kathy, we will be talking about, uh, 218 in a presentation shortly.
Okay, great. I'm just asking that you guys represent the citizens of your community and not those outside the community. I'm not saying those outside don't matter, but you're our elected official and you should be listening to what we want within our own city boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Clark?
Good morning, everyone. Um, let me just start out by saying, I think that I would very much, uh, enjoy participating if the council and everybody decided to get that shirt that Bill Ragsdale is wearing tonight with that big happy face on it. That would, that would be fun, some council meeting. Okay. I see we have another council meeting and still no revised sign ordinance is being presented. I understand, was it three months ago it got submitted and it's been at legal is from what I understand at this point. And that being the case, I know we have a current sign ordinance and, well, I'm sure somebody must be keeping track of it. And frankly, I don't care one way or the other. But I know that a lot of those yellow signs that have been in front of people's yards have been there more than 45 days. And if memory serves, 45 days was the maximum amount that a sign could be in a yard. So somebody might want to, um, look at that and, and either take action or just decide that it gets treated differently. But then we're all for not treating things differently and treating things all the same. Um, and welcome to the new city manager and thank you Reverend Hallam for being here. It's always nice to be reminded that there's a higher power for us to, uh, be responsible to. Thank you.
All we got to do is play Sign Musical Chairs.
Okay, um, Beth Fergon.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that I have been canvassing, uh, the neighborhoods recently, uh, with our petition. And, uh, I would say at least 95% of the people that I spoke with, uh, signed the petition. And even, you know, they may want a rec trail, but they want a say in where it goes and what it does and, and, and all of that. Um, 95% of the people that signed it, 100% of those people did not want it going into the frog pond. Like, hands down, absolutely did not, uh, which I think is really important. That's my main thing is I don't want it touching the frog pond. Um, I, I actually don't understand why it has to go through Delray Oaks at all. But that's, I know we're going to have a meeting on this.
And so that, that is where these, these comments are appropriate.
Okay, I didn't understand if I had to say my piece now or if I could speak afterwards.
No. Uh, where it's appropriate, when we, when we have that topic is when. And we'll do this again. We'll, we'll do another public comment and we'll call on folks.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, of course. Uh, Roberta?
Good evening. Um, thank you to, uh, the council members for hosting us so graciously always and welcome to the new city manager. Um, I'll just keep this short. I, I was reading through the agenda packet and with dismay, um, I, as I was reading it, I just wanted to address the fact that my comments in the July 27th meeting minutes were completely misrepresented regarding Fortag's impact. I never said, and I quote from the packet, "neighborhoods would be overrun by homeless," end quote. I said that, quote, "to say that my concerns for safety aren't real is insulting and certainly not true," end quote. And as I was reading through other folks', um, public comments, they were not representative of what people said. And I understand that we don't have a stenographer tracking what people are saying, but when you go through and you read the agenda packets, it's very misleading to see how the people's comments are being represented in the packet versus how they're actually represented when you watch the YouTube videos. And not everybody has the time to sift through a two or three hour, um, public meeting YouTube video to find the comments specific. Sometimes people just want to go through the agenda packets if they have time. And so I would hope that either they're not represented at all and pointed to, you know, with a link to the comments or just a better faith effort to accurately represent what people are, are expressing during these meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Uh, John Gagliotti?
Oh, I still, I still have my hand up. I, just as a point of order, Mayor, you already covered it. I, I just was hoping that we can, you know, you got it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, any other public comments about items not on the agenda? Karen, do you see any?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Uh, iPad72 Scott, now is the time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam, Madam Mayor and council members, and welcome to the new city manager. I'm just a broken record team right now, talking about the creek and the fire danger next to the park. Still a lot of dead trees up there, a lot of branches, grass and things like that. The creek, the edges of the creek were recently mowed and cut down, and that was great. But we really need to get down into the creek and remove the branches, the trees, anything that's going to snag up when we have, uh, rain, I hope at some point this year. But the creek is still a danger. The greenbelt next to the park is still a danger, and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, please raise your hand if you have a comment. Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Thank you for those. Um, and I'm going to move on to proclamations. We, with the new city manager, we had some shifts of personnel. Um, and those folks have, like I indicated earlier, um, really did an amazing job kind of, uh, jumping in the deep end to, uh, help the city keep going. So first and foremost is for, uh, Jeff Hoynes. Jeff, are you, are you out there?
I am out here, Mayor.
Okay, great. Alright, so let me read it. Proclamation in recognition of Jeffrey J. Hoynes. It's August 2021. Whereas the city of Delray Oaks is grateful to Jeff for assuming the role of acting city manager in September 2020. And whereas Jeff rose to the expectations of the council not to simply maintain the status quo by jumping into the ACM role, assessing the areas that needed help and correction, taking the situation in hand and leading the city on significant issues in the face of an ongoing pandemic. And whereas under Jeff's leadership, the city of Delray Oaks undertook several projects to ensure the safety of our residents such as the Villa Verde Rosita pathway, securing funding for file fuel reduction and reconstruction of the Portola/Work Avenue walkway and implementing operational improvements. And whereas Jeff used his great sense of humor to foster teamwork and make everyone feel like their role in the city is important through a time of organizational transition. And whereas Jeff is an energetic leader and coworker, and no matter what he takes on, it comes out better and more efficient in the long run. And whereas the city of Delray Oaks is in great shape and more prepared than ever for the future. And whereas Delray Oaks wishes to thank Jeff for his calm and collected leadership, paired with a personal style that is compassionate and kind. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allison Kerr, Mayor of Delray Oaks, do hereby proclaim the city's gratitude to Jeffrey J. Hoynes for his service to the city of Delray Oaks as acting city manager. Signed this 24th day of August 2021, I am Allison Kerr, Mayor. So thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, council and, and all the residents. I, uh, I had a, a fun time, even, uh, even during the city council meetings, uh, and, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, serve the city and looking forward to doing it as the chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jeff.
Um, anyone else have anything they would like to say? Ms. Gagliotti?
Yeah, I, Jeff, I just absolutely want to thank you for, uh, you know, for stepping up, um, and, and playing a role. Cause I, I mean, I think when you first took over, you had kind of apprehension. Well, we all did, you know, it's like, can, can you be a city manager? And I thought you did. You, you kept the wheels on, you kept the lights on and, uh, and, and I really enjoyed, you know, kind of our, uh, our back and forth and, and, uh, so I really enjoyed your time, your time and your tenure. So thank you very, very much.
Ms. Lintel?
Yes, Jeff, I would like to thank you so much for what you did for our community. And it was just a pleasure working with you. And, um, I think you did an outstanding job and to step into this role of acting city manager must have been very difficult. But you, you came through and we all thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Ms. Shirley?
Thank you. Jeff, I just want to thank you for your work. Um, you were kind to me as a new council member. We were both new in our positions and I really appreciated your support. And I really feel like City Hall is better off, um, since you've been there with your organization. I, I, you know, I just, and I, I know your dedication to the city and to the staff, and I really appreciate that. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Kim.
Uh, John Gertin?
Uh, yeah, Jeff and I have only known each other for a couple of weeks, uh, same with Chris. Um, but this isn't the first new organization that I've come into and new staff that I've come into. Um, I can tell you without a doubt, this is the most impressed that I've ever been with staff uh, and with the organization that you have and the culture here. That comes from the city council, but it also comes from the leadership. And, uh, I can just tell, just in the short time that I've been here, the leadership that both Jeff and Chris have in this organization is why you have the staff that you have and, and why things get done the way that they get done. So, uh, I'm really appreciative because this has really made the transition, uh, for me easy. Um, and I see Jeff and Chris both as partners, and I know we're going to do great things going forward. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, boss.
Uh, any other comments for, uh, Jeff?
Mayor, if I could?
Please, go ahead.
Thanks for a great year, Jeff. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for, uh, for actually running the city for me and, uh, making me look good.
No. Team GSD.
Thanks, Karen. Scott, did you have something?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. Uh, well.
But I'm sorry.
Which Scott, I guess?
Well, um, I didn't see your hand. I was, I was, uh, going for iPad Scott. But, uh, I'll get back to you in just a minute. Scott Morgan, did you have your hand up for this?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Hoine for getting the gates in the park. That was a big move and long overdue, so I appreciate that. Thirty-two-year resident here, and the park has always been an issue, and that seems to come down to night problems for now. Thank you.
My pleasure, Scott.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to thank Jeff specifically, but you know, I want to put Chris in there as well and just, just say that.
Chris next.
Uh, okay. Well, I, I was just gonna say that, I mean, in, in, in both cases, we're just so blessed to have them as part of the city. I mean, just the, the talent and their capabilities and, and really the big thing is both of them stepping up, uh, during a, a very difficult time, uh, for everyone and really not missing a beat. And, you know, I, I just, uh, you know, I, I, I want to thank, uh, Jeff for everything that he did as a, a, a city manager. It's just incredible that no previous experience and being able to step in and do what he did was just amazing. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Anyone else?
Oh, Ron. Ron Fucci's holding up his hand.
Okay, Ron, can you, um, unmute yourself?
You're muted, Ron.
How's that?
There you go.
I just want to say that, you know, it's, it was a pleasure to work with Jeff and we'll continue to work together, but, you know, just surrounding yourself with class act people, um, only makes you better, makes the city better, makes our staff better, uh, makes our residents trust us more, and, and he embodies all that. And I just want to say thank you, Jeff, for not only being a great person, but a good friend. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Any other comments for Mr. Hoine? I just want to add that, um, usually when we do this, it means people are leaving. And we are, um, in a really good position that you're still with us. And, uh, we want you to stay and we want you to help John get up and running and looking forward to, uh, what you implement coming up for the police department. Um, you and I worked really well together. I appreciated your, uh, rapid response on the, uh, walkway off of Paloma, um, the gates, the park, the fact that you love art, uh, always made me, uh, very happy. You also helped in quite a few sticky situations with some grace uh, that I wasn't necessarily expecting from a police officer. And so you, um, surprised me and, um, I am grateful for your service then and now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Benny, I see no other hands. Um. So again, thank you, Jeff, and, uh, you will be seeing him around. Uh, and so the next proclamation is in recognition of Chris Borquinn. Chris, are you with us as well?
I am, Mayor.
All right, great. Um, so this is a proclamation in recognition of you, Christopher L. Borquinn, and it is August 2021. Whereas the city of Delray Oaks is grateful to Chris Borquinn for assuming the role of acting chief of police as of September 2020. And whereas Chris took on the duties and responsibilities of the chief of police with honor and distinction. And whereas Chris ensured the continued safety of the community through adherence to the police department's mission, vision and values. And whereas Chris garnered the trust, admiration and loyalty of all that serve under him. And whereas Chris's efforts improved operational efficiencies and service to the community. And whereas Chris is a trusted and respected leader in every sense of the word. And whereas no matter what came before Chris, he handled every situation with thoughtfulness and integrity. And whereas Delray Oaks wishes to thank Chris for, for the filling in for Jeffrey Hoine as he himself took on the responsibility of acting city manager. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allison Kerr, Mayor of Delray Oaks, do hereby proclaim the city's gratitude to Christopher L. Borquinn for his service to the city of Delray Oaks as acting city, or excuse me, acting chief of police. Signed this 24th day of August 2021, Allison Kerr, Mayor. Do you have a few, um, thoughts to share?
I would, I would love to. Um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Mayor and City Council for this. I, I didn't know I would ever get a proclamation. Sometimes I make, make some up, uh, with, with other staff, mostly about my workers' comp injuries. Uh, they would, this was way better than that, way better. Um, so, uh, in, in September, when this all happened, it happened fairly quickly. Uh, we had a plan in place already at the police department that Chief Hoine put in place. It made my job really easy. It is in fact the same plan that we have now that I'm commander again. Um, and I really appreciate his, um, his willingness to take, I know how busy he was, but he always had time for me. Um, my job was not to break anything, um, to keep the status quo going until we could get, uh, up to speed again with some more people working with us and, and get him back as our leader. Uh, I told him, uh, the day after I became chief, um, that I was, uh, I was gonna paint his office in horrible color. Um, he knew, he knew I was kidding. I never did move into that office. I, 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 I kept my distance. Um. It was the best experience, uh, I think, of my career so far. Um, I really enjoyed, uh, the fact that, uh, everything is your fault. It's freeing in a way. Um, and I will very much miss how fast people call back when your, when your name is preceded by chief. I'll miss that a lot. It helped me get things done a lot faster. Some of the guys called me chief mandor. I may see if I can finagle that into my, my new role. I'll be the chief mandor. At least I'll have chief in my name. Folks will call me back quickly. I want to thank you guys again. Uh, chief, I love you. You know that. Um, I look forward to working with the new city manager and, uh, and forward we go.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Anyone have any comments for, uh, Chris? Pat?
Yes, Chris, you did an outstanding job, as we all knew you would do. Uh, and, uh, I really appreciate all your hard work and, and taking on all those added responsibilities. And it's just, like I say, a pleasure working with you and knowing you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pat.
Uh, Vicky Lucido, or Frank, whoever.
Yes, this is Frank, uh, once again. Uh, I would like to thank Chris Borquinn for years of service. He's been there every time we've called, and Chris, I will always call you back as soon as possible, no matter what you, you, you call yourself. So yeah, I, I can't thank you enough. I've known you for years. You've always been there. And while I have a chance, Jeff Hoine, we've, we recently met. You've been nothing but professional. And, um, I can't thank you enough for all your hard work. I've probably said this before, but thirty-some-odd years ago, the Delray Oaks Police Department saved my life in an auto accident out there at the intersection of, uh, 218 and, uh, 68 bef, before there were stoplights. Karen probably remembers that. But, um, anyway, I, I've always loved that the police department through the years, and, and Chris, you've continued that tradition. And, and Jeff, you're right there in, in the long line. So our officers, our police department, I can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart. Uh, uh, we're honored to have you, uh, as part of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Ms. Shirley.
Yes, I just want to thank Chris for stepping in that role as chief. I know you've been dedicated to Delray Oaks for a very long time. Um, our Uncle John just adores you. You know that. Um, and, um, so thank you for being so flexible and willing to serve the city and doing a great job at it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Um, is that Randy?
No, hold on a second.
Okay.
Hi, this is Sergeant David Nguyen, Delray Oaks PD. Um, I gotta get back to work if I get into trouble, but I just want to say that I've known Chris even before I was a police officer. And it is an honor, continues to be an absolute honor to serve with a person with the most integrity that I've ever known in my entire life. So I am, I continue to be grateful. One of the, he is probably the biggest reason why he's stuck around here so long because he exemplifies the family, the community, um, the cohesiveness that is the Delray Oaks Police Department. And I continue to, I will look forward to many more years, uh, working with him and beyond, uh, after that. So, thank Chris. Thanks for everything. Thanks for being the chief mandor. Uh, we'll get you some business cards that say chief mandor, though they won't be official. And, uh, I better get back to work. And Chief Hoine, I missed that first part. Thank you for everything. And, um, I'll be getting that, uh, package that we talked about. All right? So, take care, everybody. Thank you so much for, uh, your consideration and your time.
Thank you, David. I'm sorry, Chris, did you have something?
No, I ju, I just want to say thank you. I have, I've known David since, uh, he was a little kid. So, it's kind of, uh, fun.
Wonderful. Uh, Mr. Gagliotti?
Uh, yeah, I wanted, first of all, thank you very much for stepping up, Chris, for, uh, for this. Um, and I, we all knew, you know, that Jeff had a plan all in place, and, uh, and so when he did come over, that was, that was one of the questions. It's like, you, you know, is, is the team, I mean, is, is Chris gonna be able to kind of implement this? Because it was Jeff's plan and Jeff's the go-getter, and, and you did. Uh, and, and that was, um, very welcomed and, uh, and, and glad you did. But, but one of the things that, uh, that I, I really enjoyed about you stepping into the, the chief's role is that you were far more visible. Um, you know, Jeff, Jeff was always, uh, kind of the one who always spoke for the police department. And so it was, it was nice to be able to see, to see you in that role and get exposed to your humor. Because I had, I, I did not know, uh, that you had that side. You've always been, you know, very professional when, when you were working. And so, uh, I had a great opportunity as you, as you take here in that chief's role to work with you, um, you know, as a council member, but then also in some of the committees that you were broken out in, and, and you representing, uh, the, the police department. And so, uh, and so that was quite enjoyable, and, uh, and I hope that we get to still see, um, opportunities for your humor. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Um, I was gonna say about the plan, you're absolutely, anybody could follow it. It was one of those type plans. It was, it's well thought out. And, um, it's actually written. I mean, you can't, unless you lose it, you can follow it. You know, and we, we're not gonna lose it. We've got it here. And so, he made things easy and, um, yeah, I love that committee too. I had a lot of fun there. It, it's, uh, it's relaxing to be able to speak with people kind of offline in, in that kind of way. I like that a lot. But, thank you.
And I don't see any other hands?
Ron Fucci.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna outrank him here first. I'm gonna pull range for a second on Ron just a little bit.
You, you were there first.
Uh, Chris, it's our plan, and, uh, it's, it's not just my plan. It's the whole police department put that together. But I want to say thank you. Um, you made it a lot easier to go across the hallway. Uh, and, uh, it was nice to not have to worry about the police department because it was in good hands and, uh, very proud of, uh, all the accomplishments and the arrests and the cases we solved and the, the way you pushed things forward. So I just want to say thanks, Chris.
Thank you, chief.
Ron?
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I just, I just want to say thanks to Chris as well, and, and I'll echo, uh, Dave Nguyen's comments about integrity. Um, it's a culture there, and, and I believe that, you know, Chris is a driving force and, and with the chief man and like, uh, city manager Gerton said, that they're a great team, and, um, it's always a pleasure to work with you, Chris, and we do a lot of stuff together. And I agree with John Gagliotti that Chris is a funny guy, and if I hear one more person tell me, a resident tell me that his mom taught him in kindergarten, I'll go. But thank you, Chris. Uh, it's always a pleasure to work with you.
Uh, thank you, Ron. Most of you probably don't know, Ron is the first employee I see in the morning after the cops leave. And so that's our quiet time, around six, six-thirty in the morning. We'll, uh, we'll talk about the day's, uh, events, what happened yesterday, what's gonna happen today. If, and I mean this seriously, if I had a kid and I don't, I would be proud if he grew up to be, uh, a man like Ron. Ron is a good human being, and, um, and he, he is, he stands with us at that level in, of integrity. Good man, and, uh, we're lucky to have him.
Any, any other comments?
Making me cry.
Karen, would you like to say something?
No.
Okay.
I just want to thank Chris for his sense of humor and getting me through all these years. And, um, yeah, these guys make me cry. I love them so much. That's it.
Okay.
You're the best.
So I too want to echo the humor. Um, I got to know you a little bit with the mayor's, uh, advisory committee for emergency response, which shouldn't be a, a lot of fun, but it was. Um, and again, with the hiring committee, you brought, um, a, a nice levity to it, to, again, another serious topic. Um, and your, um, your humility, uh, and credit to everyone else. I just want to say that under your leadership or under your tenure, um, the police department, um, had quite a few very important arrests. Um, and so I hope that you take credit for that, uh, professionally as well as personally. And, um, we all need to thank you for, you and the team for keeping not only our city safe, but also the region, especially with some of the, the very high-profile and high-level arrests that were made over the last year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the department has never been running better. Uh, um, I'm, I'll just say it like that. We are, we are, we're doing some very good things. I'm very proud of everybody that I work with. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Let's move on to number seven, the presentation of Vice Mayor Lindell. Or Councilperson Donaldson, would you like to say a few words before I introduce Mr. Zeller?
I would like, uh, Mr. Donaldson to take the lead on this, please.
Okay.
Okay, uh, first I would like to thank the members of Tamsi and Fortag and the design and project management firms. And most importantly, our residents for taking the time to be here this evening. And thanks to you also, Councilmember Lindell, for your support in adding this very important item to the agenda that's gonna focus on the eight, uh, the 218 alternative that we discussed during the last city council meeting. And I personally believe that this is probably the most important discussion that we will have regarding this Fortag Trail. And I say that because if Fortag and Tamsi are unable to support an alternative that reroutes the trail and eliminates the need for a tunnel and therefore the associated switchback ramp into the Frog Pond, then I believe the Delray Oaks portion of this trail and potentially the entire project could be in jeopardy. Then ultimately, the fate of this segment within Delray Oaks in its current form would be decided in one of two ways. First, a council decision to either accept or reject the supplemental agreement for the project or the outcome of a ballot initiative which, uh, Tom Raveli mentioned before in public comment where hundreds of signatures have already been collected. So with that, before I turn it over to the representatives from Tamsi and Fortag, there is some legal guidance that our city attorney would like to provide. So with that, Alex, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Member, uh, Councilmember Donaldson. Um, as I, as I mentioned last time we discussed this, um, I have submitted a, a request to the FPPC regarding conflicts of interest, uh, and the trail. Uh, on behalf of the five council members, I spoke with the senior council today. That opinion is forthcoming. In the meantime, those of you that have reached out to me, we've discussed, um, conflicts of interest, the, uh, political reform act, uh, the FPPC regulations, uh, and with that I will, uh, 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 and with that, I will, uh, leave it to you. Of course, the decision to recuse or not recuse, uh, rests with each council person. Um, but I am, of course, available on an ongoing basis to consult. And as soon as we have the letter back from the FPPC, certainly I'll be, uh, sharing it with the council. Thank you, Councilmember Donaldson.
Thank you, Alex. Um, uh, John, can your question wait until after the presentation or would you like to talk about?
No, prior, no, I definitely would like to, just comment. Is it, is it, uh, there are no actions to be taken tonight?
There are no actions.
Yeah. So, so I think that, I mean, Alex, would you agree that, that it's okay for, for both the, the potentially conflicted council members to at least participate and, and listen?
The, what, what I'll do is, is read you eighteen seven oh four and you can make your determination. And that is the definition of sort of participating in decision is pretty broad. But let me read it to you and if you have questions, we can talk about it. So, um, the, you know, the council person is prohibited from participating in decision in which they have a conflict of interest. Um, not only making decision, but participating in decision. And the regulations define that as a public official participates in a governmental decision. If the official provides information, an opinion or recommendation for the purpose of affecting the decision without significant intervening, intervening substantive review. And so I think the operative words there are, are provides information, an opinion or recommendation for the purpose of, of the decision.
So as I hear that and read it and understand it, if we're just quiet, then we're, we're doing neither of those, correct?
Uh, that would seem correct to me. You're not, you're not, uh, you're just in, in receiving a presentation. But i- if, if you're not, um, providing information and opinion or recommendation, then, then the definition of participating in, I think, is, is not met as you're just in solely a unilateral communication in receive mode.
Perfect. Thank you.
Would, um, any other council member like to recuse themselves at this point? Okay, seeing none, uh, I'm going to turn this over to, uh, Mike Zeller, the Tamsi, uh, or the Fortag Project Manager. Mr. Zeller?
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kerr, members of the council. Uh, my name is Michael Zeller. I'm a principal transportation planner with the Transportation Agency for Monterey County. Before we get started, just wanted to, um, introduce or recognize a few other members of our team that are here with us tonight. Uh, our deputy director Todd, um, as well as our public outreach coordinator Theresa Wright and our principal engineer, Doug Bilsey. Um, also the founders of Fortag, Fred Watson and Scott Waltz are also, um, on the call. Um, as well as, uh, members from our, um, consulting team from GHD, uh, Lindsay Van Paris, who you'll be hearing, uh, more from tonight, as well as, um, Steve Groupico. And, uh, just like to say that, uh, we're pleased to be here tonight to give our presentation. As Councilmember Donaldson indicated, uh, we were asked to provide a presentation on the, uh, uh, State Route two eighteen alternative alignment for the, uh, four-door regional trail in Greenway Project. And, uh, the focus of the presentation tonight from us will be on, uh, what it would take to, uh, construct that alternative alignment. Um, so Lindsay, if you're able to, uh, advance to the next thing, please. So just to, to give a brief, uh, agenda, um, for the presentation tonight, uh, we've gone, uh, briefly over the purpose. But, uh, we'll be focusing, as I mentioned, on the, um, the alignment, uh, letting the trail along State Route two eighteen. Um, so we'll be looking at, uh, uh, issues of safety, uh, the design requirements to, uh, construct that, uh, alternative alignment, uh, the technical feasibility of doing so, um, the cost implications, and then, uh, the conclusions from our team. Um, so if we can just, uh, go one more slide. Uh, so as I mentioned, we're looking at what it would take to construct the trail along State Route two eighteen. Uh, you're seeing, uh, on the map here along the, uh, the purple line is the, the current alignment that was, uh, determined to be the preferred, uh, alternative or the preferred alignment from our certified environmental impact report. Um, and this is, uh, the, uh, proposed project that we are, uh, that's currently funded and moving forward. Um, along the orange, uh, line, you'll see, uh, the alternative alignment that we did, uh, some additional analysis on. And we will be providing our, uh, presentation on tonight. So, uh, running along Canyon Del Ray, uh, but then still crossing two eighteen at Carlton and running up Carlton to Plumas. So we'll share some of the similar characteristics with the, the current alignment. Um, and with that, I'd be, uh, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Lindsay Van Paris, uh, the, uh, uh, lead for the consulting team to go over the, uh, the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and, uh, thank you, councilmembers and mayor for having us here today. As Mike said, I'm going to walk you through, um, the, the SR two eighteen alignment. But before I get there, uh, there's some nuances that I did want to go over. Um, and the first piece is that the regional parks, uh, district has indicated that they do want to provide accessible connectivity to the Frog Pond as well as still providing connectivity to, uh, Work Memorial Park. And what would that take to provide accessible connectivity at, uh, Work Memorial? It's not, it, it's a, a trail kind of down that old, old haul road. And at the Frog Pond, a switchback would be needed to provide connectivity into that, that park for all users. Um, we're not talking about that. And on this presentation, the main purpose of the presentation will be to just focus on the alignment, um, starting here at North Fremont, going down two eighteen, across Carlton and then up Carlton to Plumas. Um, so our team revisited the SR two eighteen trail alternative at the request of, uh, of the city to determine, or at Councilmember Donaldson, to determine the viability. And can Fortag be built on SR two eighteen? The simple answer is yes. Yes, it can. As engineers, um, we can design and, and construct amazing things in really complicated environments. So yes, it can be done, but do we recommend it? Based on our engineering judgment, that answer is no. We do not recommend it. Why? Because of the tremendous costs and the tremendous impacts to safety, environment, and, and financially, not just here, but also in the long run. In our opinion, it comes at too great of a cost. And before I get into why we don't recommend it, I do want to walk through what considerations went into developing the conceptual alignments, um, all of the alignments, including this two eighteen alignment, and walk you through the details of what the alignment would look like and what that would mean to the community. So whenever we evaluate any engineering alignment, we always look at balance and balancing on multiple priorities. And so some of the key considerations that we looked at were safety, design requirements, technical feasibility and cost. In every project, we ask ourselves the same questions. For safety, does the alignment provide safe separation from traffic? What are the risks to the users along the alignment? Are they acceptable risks? And is this the safest option? Then for the design requirements, we're held to certain design criteria and design standards based on the jurisdiction that the project is in. In this case, that is Caltrans. And so does this meet the minimum design requirements imposed by Caltrans? And will Caltrans support it? Then the technical feasibility, can it be reasonably designed and constructed? Does it meet the requirements for an inclusive trail system? And then cost, most people just think, well, what's the dollar amount to construct it? But we ask, what is the cost to the environment? What is the cost to the road user and the community? What is the initial construction cost and what are the future maintenance costs? Then, when we know all of that information, we ask ourselves, is this the best use of public funds? So I want to start off with talking about safety. Safety is the number one thing that we have to conform to for engineers. Um, my history and my outlook on delivering safe solutions plays strongly into the balanced approach. Um, I've seen the consequences of unsafe conditions firsthand, which is why I switched careers from collision investigation to become a design engineer and design safe systems. So let's take a look at some of the safety information all about, or within Delray Oaks. So, um, WalkScore got, WalkScore.com is a private company that provides walkability services and home and apartment search tools. Um, and WalkScore believes that walkable neighborhoods with access to public transit, that better commutes and proximity to the people and places that we all love are like, are the key to a happier, healthier and more sustainable lifestyle. So what, what does this have to do with safety? While pedestrians and bikers are our most vulnerable road users and without safe, accessible and dedicated facilities for walking and biking, these users are at even more risk. So we took a look at WalkScars, WalkScore specifically in Delray Oaks. And these scores are based on, out of zero to a hundred, one hundred being the highest. Is the WalkScore, uh, Delray Oaks ranked in the bottom rung, uh, with a score of twenty-three out of a hundred, which means it's a very car-dependent city and almost all errands require a car. And it ranked the lowest tier in bike, um, Bikeable is, or BikeScore as well, meaning that there is minimal bike infrastructure. Uh, and biking and walking, where, where are road users most vulnerable? They're most vulnerable when they are crossing traffic or crossing the street. And seventy percent or more of our pedestrian fatalities in the U.S. occur at intersections that are not controlled or do not exist. Meaning it's not at a, it's at a mid-block crossing, so there's no street intersection or there's no stop sign or signal. Um, why, walking and biking is hazardous in Delray Oaks. According to the California Office of Traffic Safety, when compared to twelve similar-sized cities, Delray Oaks ranks second for collisions involving pedestrians over sixty-five, third for collisions involving bicyclists, and twenty-one percent of all collisions in Delray Oaks involved bicycles and pedestrians. So taking a look at the two eighteen corridor, more than half of the collisions within Delray Oaks occurred on SR two eighteen. Those symbols there show the, the locations of various collisions that occurred right within our project area. So what does this mean for a trail on State Route two eighteen? Well, the high speeds and traffic volume along SR two eighteen do not provide an acceptable out-grade crossing, which is why the two eighteen alternative was rejected, um, ultimately. But again, uh, we want to just take a look and explore at what it would take to construct this alternative and what the trade-offs, uh, are involved. So taking a look at the design requirements, um, everything changes. And even in the short time that has passed between when the EIR was developed and now, the emphasis on equity and the way we travel has increased dramatically. More and more emphasis is being placed on overall roadway safety. Uh, we have a thing called Vision Zero where we're trying to reduce the number of deaths and serious injuries on our roadway networks to zero. Um, there's emphasis on getting out of our cars, providing equitable access and solutions for all, reducing vehicle miles traveled. And our federal and state transportation authorities are responding to this by implementing policy and design guidelines. So in this case, Caltrans is the roadway owner and they set the standards. And they just recently implemented a new complete streets policy that will impact what the trail would look like along two eighteen. So here's a lot of the information that I'm not going to break down completely right now. Uh, I'd be happy to answer questions on it in the question and answer. But really, the most important part here is highlighted in red. Uh, this is an example, or this is an excerpt from the Complete Streets Guide that, that lets you know what type of bike trail we would have to build. And the answer is a side path. So these requirements are put forth based on safety needs and standards. And this process requires us to document, um, and compare project alternatives, meet Caltrans' design criteria and conform to the new, um, Complete Streets Guidance, um, which requires designing for all ages and abilities. Um, and based on this, the appropriate type of bike and pedestrian facility for SR two eighteen would be a side path um, based on the level of, uh, or the, the speeds and the need to separate cyclists and pedestrians from the, the highway. So what does a side path on an arterial freeway look like? Um, this is an example of the Highway one oh one bike path in Ventura County. And what I would like to point out here with this red arrow is the difference in color in the asphalt. So the darker asphalt's the newer asphalt. And this needed, the segment of the freeway needed to be widened in order to accommodate current highway design standards and provide significant or enough separation between the cyclist and the motoring public and creating a space for shoulders. As you can see here, there's a tire remnant in the road. Um, so needing to provide that safe space for people to pull off since there is now a barrier and you can't pull off onto a standard shoulder. So let's take a look at, at two eighteen. This here is your existing conditions. Um, this shows, you know, the, the two lanes with the shoulders. Um, you'll see the AA here, that is the section here. So we've got a five-foot shoulder, which is less than standard to the, um, two twelve-foot lanes, a five-foot bike lane and a three-foot shoulder. And then we've got, um, along various alignments, we've got, um, private fencing that has been constructed within the Caltrans right-of-way. So you'll see here, the right-of-way is actually down at the bottom of the hill. And that is where, so there is enough right-of-way, um, within the existing Caltrans right-of-way. They own eighty feet, um, from forty feet on either side of the center line of two eighteen. And that puts the right-of-way line down here roughly at the bottom of, of the screen. So constructing a trail, um, as I mentioned before, because we are provide, we would be looking at providing a trail, um, uh, along the shoulder. We do have to widen SR two eighteen in order to accommodate the minimum shoulder widths. And in doing so, uh, to, to provide, we need to also provide a maintenance strip here, which I'll show you the section view. Um, so this is a section view. I color-coded it, so it would hopefully be easier to understand. Um, so all of the colors in the aerial view match the colors in the section view. Um, so this is the approximate location of the existing fence that's there, out there today, that we just saw in the other picture. Um, and this is required in order to maintain the wall. So it's a twelve-foot wide maintenance strip that would have to be driven on by maintenance vehicles. Um, and then a fence would be placed here on the right-of-way line. And so in order to do that, just working from this right-of-way line out, we are now, um, in here widening the shoulder to eight feet, having the twelve-foot lanes. You can see the lanes are shifted over, which means we have to accommodate an eight-foot shoulder on the other side. And all of this increases impervious surface, which triggers water quality requirements, which is just engineering, um, jargon for we'd have to create something to, to treat the water that runs off the road, um, before it goes into a storm drain system. And that would require another retaining wall on the other side. So we're looking at retaining walls along both sides of two eighteen. The left walls would vary in height between, uh, twelve and fifteen feet. And the, the wall on the south side will, is about, um, thirteen to sixteen feet. We did take a look at an option of reducing those walls and dropping the trail below the level of the highway. But we, for various reasons, including impacts, um, how that would feel for users not having that visibility, um, we opted to, to not proceed with that option and just proceed with the option that is at the same height as the, the existing SR two eighteen. Um, the trees that just popped in there, we would have to remove a significant number of trees, as shown on this next slide. More than a hundred and sixty trees would have to be removed. And a significant number of those are, are existing oak trees and, and pine trees. So now that we looked at kind of a snippet of what that alignment would look like, and as you can see, the, the homes are pretty much just from Rosita, um, up along here. And then once we get by Delray Park, we just have the drop-off with a considerable amount of trees in this area. So to, just on the south side alignment, it's forty-six trees, um, that would have to be taken out in order to accommodate this alignment. But that's the linear alignment. And now, how, how do we cross two eighteen? And in the Caltrans, um, process, we have to go through what is called an intersection control evaluation. And what that does is we have to evaluate the intersection control types, being a signal, um, Sorry about that, being a signal, a stop sign or a roundabout. And we have to look at the different uh what we call warrants or metrics on what each of those are need or or have to to have like the components they have to have in order to be installed. And Carlton does not meet the warrants for a signal. So it would either have to be stop-controlled or roundabout. Caltrans would not support a stop-controlled on a higher-speed uh roadway like this. So our option is a roundabout. And what you're looking at the screen here was a um corridor study for two eighteen that was done for Tamsi back in twenty nineteen. Since twenty nineteen, along with this Complete Streets policy, Caltrans has also issued newer guidance on roundabouts. And they have a minimum diameter requirement for the roundabout, which means that to get this approved through Caltrans, we would have to have a roundabout that is roughly um this big. Just to accommodate the vehicles and a separated shared-use path for bicycles and pedestrians to go around it. As you could see, that increases the impacts to the city's courtyard um and to City Hall. And then that this gets further complicated because as a lot of you know, the slopes out there on Carlton are incredibly steep. They're at thirteen percent. We cannot put a roundabout on thirteen percent and has to be four percent maximum cross slope or you get trucks that overturn. So a lot of grading would have to change and that whole intersection would have to be modified and either elevated or Carlton dropped in order to provide that flat surface to construct a roundabout. Which would mean significant construction impacts and cost. So going in a bit more into the technical feasibility. There are the technical challenges are significant. As I pointed out, we'd have a hundred and sixty trees removed. We did look at the ability to move the trail on the other side of of SR two eighteen. But that has more crossings of of roadways and streets, which increases risks to road users. And it would be less desirable. Um, and we also have these high-transmission uh power lines, which cannot be underground easily or cost-effectively. So they do need to be maintained and there are existing utility rights for these utilities. It would require reclaiming the full Caltrans right-of-way from the existing occupants. It's currently on the north and the south sides. It would require um some safety, some safety challenges. The uh Caltrans Department or um Office of Safety. It it will be a struggle to get to get this approved um through them. Significant, significant impacts during construction. This we're estimating would take a year or more in just wall construction alone, because the walls need to be made or most likely need to be made out of concrete. And then maintenance. So Caltrans will not take on maintenance of a a trail system along this corridor, so that maintenance would fall onto the um city of Delray Oaks. And um, and then getting into more of the Caltrans requirements, uh, meeting the the design requirements will be difficult. Again, on the safety topic, Vision Zero is the zero deaths and injuries in serious injuries on our roadway network. And with the at-grade crossings, those risks increase. Even if they are at a controlled intersection. It is difficult to meet the Complete Streets requirements, given the existing topography and terrain out there and the existing width. Intersection control will require a roundabout at Carlton, which as I talked about on the the Carlton slide, will likely require uh design exceptions from Caltrans, which are safety-based and very, very hard to get if if possible at all. Which ties into the design standards. So meeting those design standards is will be a challenge. Water quality requirements, because we are touching two eighteen to meet the water quality requirements, we have to put in that bio-infiltration swale, which comes with maintenance, additional maintenance um and 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 costs associated with that. It also limits the ability for Caltrans to do any future improvements within their corridor. And I know with working with Caltrans and talking with them uh along this project in the city of Monterey, there's a there's discussion going on about uh bus transit lanes, um dedicated carpool lanes, things like that to really help promote these mode shifts and getting people to use pub more public transportation. So that would be precluded. SR two eighteen conditions, as I said before, the don't meet current standards. And so by putting in this new change, we have to upgrade to new standards, which increases the costs. The existing utility easements that are in place, um, there, we'll have to look at at that. That cost is usually either split fifty-fifty between the utility owner and the agency. So that would be uh half a project cost. And then maintenance, um, as I explained earlier, Caltrans typically has not in the past and likely will not take maintenance responsibilities for this trail, uh, and that would fall onto the city of Delray Oaks. So what does this mean cost-wise? The construction costs will be higher. So we're looking at walls, barriers. We have to put a barrier in between the roadway and and the the wall. Or sorry, the roadway on the back of the trail. And so what that looks like, we uh is to be determined. You saw on the one oh one, they've got the decorative, pretty railing. We priced out just the standard concrete barrier. Um, that would be the cheapest option. The utility costs, the cost to construct the trail section, the cost to construct SR two eighteen and the intersection improvements. So looking at those, we're at almost seven million in walls, a half a million in a barrier, over a million in utilities, the trail section roughly two-point-seven million dollars. The SR two eighteen work, four-point or two-point-four-three million and the intersection improvements will be about two-point-nine million. Then diving into the other costs, we've got the cost to design, the cost to the community public. Environmental mitigation for all of the tree removal. And right-of-way costs, maintenance costs, and then the overall project costs. So we're looking at three-point-three million in design. Half a million in travel delay, half a million in environmental mitigation, a million in right-of-way. Maintenance, that's to be determined. At the looking at an overall project cost, not including maintenance, at more than twenty-two million dollars. So in conclusion, can Fortag be built on SR two eighteen? Yes. Do we recommend it? No. And why? Again, the tremendous impacts to safety, the environment and the cost. So we base our no on engineering judgment. And that engineering judgment is rooted in, as I say a a million times, safety. It is not the safest option. It has higher construction costs, higher city maintenance costs, larger training walls along backyards. The need to reclaim right-of-way. Long SR two eighteen closures, challenges with getting it approved through Caltrans and meeting all the design requirements and design standards. Significant amount of tree removal. And expensive and costly utility relocations. So with that, I am, I that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Um, so Cheryl, I see your hand, but we go to the council first and then we'll go to the public. So hang in there. Um, what I'd like to do is go to the council for any uh questions. Let's start with Ms. Lynn Tell.
In light of the fact that I may have to recuse myself, um, we need to hear from the FPPC. I choose not to make any comments tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go to John Gagliotti.
Yeah, same thing, same same comment.
Okay, Scott Donaldson.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. I I would like to hear what the public has to say and then maybe you'll allow me to make some comments after that.
Okay, um, Amnis Shirley.
Yes, in light of uh not knowing the FPTC um uh conclusion, I'm not going to say anything, but I would like to really thank Lindsay and Mike for being here. I know this was a presentation that you had to put together sort of rushed, but you did a fabulous job. Thank you for being so thorough and clear and um it was visually understandable and appealing and um just thank you for all of your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I have two clarifying questions. And it has nothing to do with opinion recommendation. It's just a clarifying uh points. One is, could you tell us the likelihood of Caltrans approving something like this?
It it would be, it would be a challenge um for them to approve. And because again, all of the their standards are rooted in safety. And so we have to have minimum separation from traffic. We have to have minimum widths. We have to have uh minimum shoulder widths. And so providing all of those standards will be critical to Caltrans approval of the trail. And again, with the perclusion of of any future development, I think it would be a long, a long road to get their approval. We did bring this up to them and and again, from a safety standpoint, having that volume of traffic on the on the two eighteen on a daily basis of more than twenty thousand cars. And having the higher speeds, providing at-grade crossings will not be ideal and would likely not be approved.
Okay, um, and uh you currently have a grant for a project. Would it, let's say, Caltrans said, sure. Would that grant be applicable or uh would that grant be lost?
Mike, I will take a stab at that and then turn that over to you. So the grant is the Active Transportation Program. And the grant was written to provide a connectivity to the city amenities and open spaces and provide connection to the various parks and provide a safe and equitable trail for for all users. So it would require a project change request, because it would change the nature and the routing of the project. And it would be up to the California Transportation Commission to either approve that change or deny it. In my past experience, working on various uh ATP projects across the state or active transportation projects across the state, they likely would not approve that change.
Um, and what might be the consequences of not um going through with a project?
With the
Grant, yes.
Mike, I will let you um respond to that.
Well, um, obviously, uh, losing the grant, that would be um, you know, over a ten million dollars that's been uh awarded to us for this project from the state. So that amount of funding would be lost. It would potentially uh, you know, put in jeopardy future uh grant applications as well, um, from not delivering the project. Project delivery is sometimes one of the things that they look at. Past project delivery experience and performance in um awarding future, future grants.
Would that um be a consequence to Tamsi and or Delray Oaks?
Um, well, primarily, uh, Tamsi is the one that received the grant. So future grant applications from Tamsi uh would receive uh higher scrutiny, I would imagine. And in addition, uh, from uh the perspective of Delray Oaks, I could potentially uh look negatively as well for the city.
Okay, okay. Um, that are, those are the questions that I have. So what I'd like to do is uh go out to the public. Cheryl Campos, thank you for waiting. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak up on the behalf of many of the people that live here in Delray Oaks. Couple of things, I would like to actually see the same assessment side-by-side with your current plan in comparison to the two eighteen alternative route. I find it very interesting that it is quoted as a hundred and sixty trees would need to be removed, yet there is no tree count for taking it all the way up Carlton and the number that would need to be removed from the Frog Pond. My second point would be, I'm really curious what's really going on and if everyone's truly being transparent. Seems to me we've hired a company to do a job and they should not be pushing their opinion or an agenda on us. That's sure what it's felt like all the way through. And if I did not make, uh, if I did not misinterpret what I just heard, the folks that would actually be losing the most money from this as Tamsi. And so therefore, I think I've just answered my own question about what's really going on. The roundabout at the uh intersection there where Carlton is, is an extraordinary improvement over what's currently there and or any flashing crosswalk with lights that was possibly discussed if nothing else was changed and the pond is entered alternatively. In my opinion, I live off of Carlton and coming out of there, roundabout is an excellent solution. And if we're going to have to compromise or take over any land, certainly taking it from the location of the City Hall and the courtyard is a far better option than going into the Frog Pond. Um, and finally, I'd like to say that for those that would have truly liked to have a functional rec-trail that our city could be proud of, certainly eliminating the ridiculous dog-leg up Carlton uh into Plumas and instead putting those funds into this wonderful two-eight turn alternative, alternative route would be a much better use uh of public funds and highly functional rec-trail as opposed to the um currently proposed. So uh, those are the things I'd like to actually see. And I'd also finally like to have somebody from Caltrans actually on one of these calls. So instead of someone else's opinion of how they feel or what they think Caltrans will and won't do, that actually have a representative from Caltrans that has the authority to speak on their behalf would be much appreciate appreciated. Thank you for my opportunity to speak up. And I hope you will consider doing the right thing instead of uh something financially or power-driven. Thank you.
Cheryl, um, Kathy.
Thank you. Uh, this is Kathy again from Angeles Way. I'm gonna just make some comments about the presentation I just heard. For starters, two eighteen is not a freeway. It's a highway. Um, I don't really appreciate it being characterized as a freeway. The the presentation talked about how people in Delray Oaks need to get in a car to run their errands. Well, there aren't that many amenities in Delray Oaks. So even if you had a really wonderful bike path, we're still gonna have to get in a car to run our errands. Uh, and there's a few people that won't, but for the most part, you can't just say we're gonna put some paths through Delray Oaks. Therefore, you can go everywhere in Delray Oaks, do everything in Delray Oaks and take care of all your errands. It's it's just not true. We don't have the amenities in Delray Oaks. We're still gonna have to go to other cities. I feel like some scare tactics are being thrown out here and that this presentation was meant to be um presented in the worst light possible for two eighteen. I'm still a fan of two eighteen, because by connecting, like I said before, a food source and parks is going to attract the homeless. Homeless encampments, the unhoused. I'm trying to be politically correct here, but I'm not doing such a great job. Also, um, you know, you talked about safety and everything that's been mentioned about safety has been focused on the pedestrian and bicycle safety, but not what, how the the city itself could be injured by the increased population, which just by pure percentages will raise crime. If we do have homeless encampments, um, we not only have a danger from the people that come here, we have a danger from warming fires, we have a danger from hazardous materials that are left behind. And then I found it interesting in this presentation, they talk about the cost of maintenance and other things that were never factored into the other trail, the original plan, which we will still have to pay for maintenance. But for some reason, it's a big deal now, but not when it's the plan they like. Once again, um, I'm thinking maybe Delray Oaks isn't a place at all for this trail. And I would like them to consider maybe going up Broadway and coming down General Jim Moore. People would have access to the Frog Pond, they could access from General Jim Moore, maybe there's a Maybe there's a way to do something that isn't so intrusive to the Frog Pond. But my vote still goes for Canyon Delray over the existing plan. But if we can't find a good plan that makes all the residents of Delray Oaks happy, then we shouldn't have a plan at all for a trail that comes through our city. We need to do this right. Thank you.
Thanks Kathy. Roberta. Roberta.
Hi there. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can we restart my time?
Randy, can you restart her time, please? There we go.
Thank you. Thank you. So the overarching theme that I heard throughout the presentation is that doing any sort of alternative would be difficult. I just have to say, doing anything properly can be difficult. And to echo something that Supervisor Askew said during her time in office is she said, we can do hard things. So it's possible. It's just gonna be hard. I'd like to read a quote that fits very well with how I feel about Fortag. Quote, "People aren't happy. We weren't reached out to enough. Maybe you went to the Oaks a couple of times. You didn't come to the citizens of Delray Oaks and ask us. And I know when you looked at all of your projects, by law through CEQA, you have to look at all those elements, but you didn't come directly to us. You were just following what CEQA was telling you to do and you were completing your EIR. But I'm telling you now, this is kind of a no brainer for us and we're willing to stand up. I'm just letting you know, we're all here to let you know that this is going to impact us and we're not happy." End quote. This was Councilmember Shirley's public comment at an airport workshop in 2019. "All you have to do is substitute Airport Road with Fortag and the impassioned speech and concern shared are identical. The council members are elected to represent the citizens. Sometimes being an elected leader means you make decisions that don't align with your personal beliefs because it's not about you and what you think is right. It's about the citizens who elected the council members and trusted each member to represent them, not yourself, but them. We have been voicing our concerns since 2018. Those concerns have been met with responses reminiscent of gaslighting, have been dismissive, and the design elements of the project have been described differently to people depending whether they support or oppose the PR portion of it. Did you think we were just going to go away? No one asked us if we wanted this. Let's be honest, the plan was presented and Fortag and Tamsi basically said, "We're building this trail through your town. Do you want us to take away your parking, paint lines on the road or put up signs?" There was never an option presented to say no or the serious entertainment of any alternatives. We will have to deal with the ramifications of any project they complete in our city. And while we are expected to compromise our neighborhoods and the integrity of the Frog Pond, Fortag and the hired guns are unwilling to compromise on anything, but taking away the spot, I can put my garbage cans on the street. There are over 175 signs and close to 400 registered voters in this city who do not want this project barreling down our residential streets, desecrating the Frog Pond, or have confidence that the city is prepared to maintain a regional project meant for 1,000 to 3,000 users a day." Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Randy? Okay, thanks. Sorry, I can't see the names. Veronique.
Yes, hi. About this presentation, you're acting like Fortag is going to improve Delray Oaks walkability score, but it's not. The closest thing we have to a city center is Stone Creek. And the current Fortag project doesn't even provide a connection to Stone Creek. It doesn't even provide a connection to go to the Oaks condo from the park. So all it does is make a regional rec trail go from Monterey to through the rails. So what is the added value? Things are not going to improve with the path you have in mind, well, to pedestrians from the park to Safeway. The main issue we have in this area is speed on 218. You can help slow down 218, make crossing safer without spending $10 million on a tunnel. You don't need to have a dual pedestrian cyclist rec trail on 218. Pedestrians can continue to use the current path by the park. And if you leave 218 for cyclists only, you do not need 12-foot wide paths. And you're also very conveniently not mentioning step two of the Fortag project, which is slated to go through the entire
Am I the only one that's not hearing Veronique right now?
I can't hear her.
Okay. So Veronique, your connection is cutting in and out. So what I'd like to do, Veronique, is move on to the next public comment. If you can come back, we can give you another minute and a half because you're approximately halfway through. So, Don Gruber.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we heard arguments that support doing what you already want to do. To me, it's, if it's such a challenge, let the engineers accept that challenge and rise to it. That being said, I sure didn't like the depiction of Canyon Delray. And if the engineers can't solve this problem in a reasonable fashion, then let there be no project. So we have had a formal presentation from proponents to the council. And the council, I think at a minimum, should make an agenda item to hear from the opposition formally. As it is, we're kind of confined to these little three-minute pieces. But I think it would be great for the council to set it up so they can hear a more formal, formal presentation of the opposition. Or better yet, perhaps a workshop, including council, Tamsi, regional parks, and the opponents of the project, where a reasonable discussion occurs and some reasonable compromise is forged. As it is, it might help diffuse what's working up to be a major war in Delray Oaks. And I believe that a large part of the problem is the feeling that it's, that we're not being heard. I, I know you're there listening tonight, but that's different than hearing. So I think that it would help the city council and help the city of Delray Oaks if we can all be included in a, what seems to be a reasonable, open-minded discussion. I think there's room for a compromise to be reached on all this. And we really would just like to be heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Beth Fergon. Beth, we can hear you or we can hear paper shuffling. Beth?
Looks like she's muted.
Okay, can you unmute her? She was able to discuss a minute ago.
Randy, can you unmute Beth Fergon?
I cannot mute anyone.
Okay.
Okay. So Beth, we're gonna move on and when you figure it out, we will come back. Okay? I will ask for you again. Jim Clark.
Hey, there I am. Mr. Zeller and Lindsay, first of all, I want to say what an amazingly clear presentation that was. The Lindsay's tempo and her explanations and laying the groundwork and the graphics that you did and the pictures were astonishing. When she finished, I thought that was one of those, she could have just dropped the mic and walked off stage. That was just professionally unwell done. And it did point out a lot of challenges on 218. But the other thing that it pointed out that people need to grasp too is whether it's 13 or 160 trees. What did they, that we had to notice that all the A called the Saks were going to be losing 10, 20, or 30 feet? I think I heard 80 feet at one point of their property line that lines up to 218. It was going to render City Hall, basically the property of City Hall worthless as far as getting in and out, and that would probably have to move. And I also heard something in there about dealing with wastewater before it gets out to the ocean. So what that really points out, besides the challenges and the expenses, is even if we went and tried to do this 218, we're just gonna have a different set or maybe 50% of the same people because they've got the same concerns, dealing with the same environmental impact. I don't know how you solve this. I'm far enough away that I'm, I'm just not sure, could that or whatever. But it sounds to me like even if you decided to drive to the 218, as soon as the folks that are complaining about the other environmental issues, they're gonna complain about these and you're not gonna get that one through either. Tough place to be in, but again, I just want Lindsay to know regardless of what she hears tonight, that was a fabulous presentation. Thank you.
Salem.
Yes, hi. I want to thank the council for providing this opportunity and this presentation. I second the previous present, the previous speaker with, by saying that the presentation was really good. I am currently in Montreal and speaking French all day. So if you can forgive my accent and my, the way I express what I'm gonna say, I'm a cyclist myself and I am a supporter of having a bike trail going to Delray Oaks. There are many different configurations it could take. Although I believe that what we heard tonight is shown from a very concrete set of data and with a lot of expertise. I was wondering if we compared the 218 option, which was just presented tonight, to that which was originally planned, what would the increase of maintenance costs be? Do we have a sense of that? What would the increase of building costs be? What would the increase of safety cost be for the city and/or for the project at large? That would be good to know because then we can really compare. It's not just a matter of seeing the two options, one after the other. And what are the differences in impacts between both projects from an environmental point of view? Because I'm hearing a lot of people speaking of concerns for Frog Pond and for trees. What are the differences? We just spoke about the number of trees removed in one case versus the other. There's also the question of the impact on water, such as the wastewater, the addition of concrete use, the impact on Frog Ponds. Are, how different would the impact be with this project versus the other? If there also needs to be access provided to Frog Pond and a switchback for, to meet ADA requirements? Same with safety. Do we have any information? A lot of people are talking about crimes. Do we have any information on crime changes in areas where rec trails and tunnels are added? There is such information out there and I don't really know that this has been clearly brought up yet. In, but people speak of fear about that. And I've not, I have not heard specific information as to how much more crime do we typically get or not get? In some case, maybe get less crime when rec trails are used. I believe that actually, from my understanding, is that you get less crime if any crime change occurs when rec trails are added to neighborhoods. And I'm also concerned as a cyclist, but also for the residents around my area of Delray Oaks, where there's a number of older people. And I'm concerned for their safety crossing the streets. I'm concerned for my safety crossing the street right now. I sure wouldn't want to be biking on 218. So that's my three minutes, is it?
Yes.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Ragsdale Cronin.
Thank you. Good evening. Bill Ragsdale Cronin, Carlton Drive. It's unfortunate we have to go through this now. This thing has been in the process for over 10 years. My wife was the Delray Oaks representative on Tamsi way back in the very beginning when Fortag was first presented. And I'm pretty sure, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe Tamsi was wooed a bit by our previous city manager to bring it through Delray Oaks to get some money to maybe clean up the mess on Carlton Drive with the traffic calming measures that were put there and a few other things. But I've heard, oh, how wonderful it would be to go down Canyon Delray. I wonder how wonderful the people on the south side looking at a 13 to 15-foot high concrete wall would think? How wonderful it is. You know, I kind of agree with some of the folks. If you can't build it the way you want it, don't build it. Send all the revenue and all the, the resources to Seaside because they're ready to embrace it. Anybody goes drive down Broadway lately and look at the plans that the city of Seaside has for Broadway to make it a bicycle-friendly, foot-friendly, go walk around and have a little tapas, a little lunch, a little dinner, a little music, whatever. You know, send it over to the seaside. Let them have the money. They're certainly working hard to get it. We talk about in different venues, we talk about having a vibrant downtown. I don't care where you build it in Delray Oaks. If you don't have any kind of connectivity, it's not gonna matter because nobody's gonna be able to go there. So yeah, $22 million is a lot of money. Yeah, you can build it on Canyon Delray. 10 years ago, they looked at it and said it wasn't, it wasn't feasible then. It certainly doesn't financially or anywhere else look feasible now. And the last question I would like to ask of the Tamsi folks or to get some kind of feedback is if we were to go somehow, they found the money and Caltrans gave it a blessing and we head off down this path, don't they have to improve 218 front to back all the way or just through our section of town? I'm guessing because of the state laws, the state requirements, once you stick a shovel in 218, you've gotta go from 68 all the way to Highway 1. I may not be, that may not be a fact, but I'm kind of guessing it might be. Because once the state decides they want to do something, they want to do it the whole way through. So a lot of, lot of layers to the onion. I still think if you build it, if you build this thing down 218, you're still gonna bring the homeless people and the, and all the other things, the parks, district, what's access into the Frog Pond anyway? And it's their Frog Pond. It's not ours. So I'm just thinking, I'm not sure where the initiative folks are going with this. They're trying to stop a tunnel under a state highway. They're trying to stop a path going through a property that the city of Delray Oaks has no control over. Kind of an interesting conundrum. Anyway, that's about it. Thanks.
May I have my turn now?
Beth, you're not quite yet.
I was called on earlier though. I was called on earlier.
I realize, Beth, but we've been going and you are next. Okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Patrice.
I'm Patrice Vecchione. Thank you so much. I want to really thank Tamsi for that fabulous presentation. And I'd like to remind fellow residents that the idea of the project, as Lindsay said, is to provide connectivity between open spaces. Running a trail along 218 was the antithesis of that. As a rider and a walker, I would never use that route. It will be unpleasant and, as Lindsay clarified, unsafe. The cost of it is outrageous comparatively and the loss of trees. For those of you who have spoken with such care, I think, about the Frog Pond, to lose 160 trees, that's far more. There are a couple that will be lost potentially in the first phase of this trail at the Frog Pond. And let me respond to the point that Celine made. Statistics, research, science shows that crime goes down in cities when there are rec trails and home values go up. I'd also like to clarify, this is not a new project. This has been talked about in our city and received unanimous approval for years from the city council over, over a long period of time. I would also like to remind residents that being heard and being, and having direction taken from residents, those are two very different things. You have been heard. You just may not be getting what you want. I also would like to encourage residents to remember that unless you are an engineer, you are probably not qualified to comment on those portions. I'm not an engineer and I won't comment on those portions. I would like to say the current plan is a fabulous one. I would like to say the current plan is a fabulous one. As a walker and a rider, I would use it often. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patrice. Beth? Beth Fergon? Karen, do you see her?
I'm looking. I don't see her.
Um, Beth? Okay, I, uh, okay, so we're gonna uh, keep going. Um, and who I see next is uh Renee Weena.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, nice to be here. Um, I live on Carlton. The, the other end of Carlton, so the trail doesn't impact here, and I'm a bike rider, I'm a walker, so I have been in favor of a, of a trail, um, and had been in favor of this project from the get-go. Um, until some things started popping up about the project where it appeared that there was a lack of transparency in some of the items that were coming through. And that's what I would like to address. Um, my biggest concern and the concern of here is was that intrusion, and I think that it was addressed today with regard to the twelve feet. Um, because twelve feet for a bike trail sounds ridiculous to me. I'm on bike trails all the time. I've lived in other communities in which uh, bike trails were a part of the living community. None were intrusive of twelve feet wide. In that address, I wanted to make note of the concern that was brought up by one of or several citizens with regard to crime and all that, and I would just say it is as well my understanding that having a bike trail in your community actually does increase your value. It does not decrease, and it has been known that that deters versus um, the acceptance of. So I think that that, I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm not concerned there at all. What I am concerned about that I do not think is being transparent is on the plans that were shown. This is a phase of a continuing project. There are other lines that were noted and dotted lines within the course of the frog pond for potential future, and that I don't believe is really being addressed. At least that I have heard to a level where I can say I'm comfortable that this is not going to be kind of the end of this project, that they don't have plans to perhaps run it further connection through the frog pond. So I would like to know what those other uh, lines were that were part of, those dotted lines that were part of the um, initial plan that I had seen before. The other thing is, is again, I've been a huge fan of wanting to have this. I'm, I'm out of time. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. Um, uh, Gary Krieger.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess as I'm listening, a couple of things I just wanted to put out there for thought as well. The uh, the earlier comment trying to um, compare to what a council member surely had said about the road is somewhat disingenuous at the time. The uh, there were no public meetings going on about the road, and she helped to uh, lead the protest against it. And just for the record, since two thousand seventeen, there's been ten council meetings where Fortag was agendaism, other comment accepted. Sometimes I want rancorous comment, but it has been a fair amount of public comment, four acorn articles, numerous workshops. The, going to address the one to three thousand uh, people on the trail number we keep hearing about. If you read the ER, that's for the entire trail, and they stipulate that most of that's going to be up in CSU and B Marina area. There's not going to be one to three thousand people coming through Delray Oaks every, every day. That's uh, entirely taken out of context. And as several people have um, come in on the park district owns the frog pond, not Delray Oaks, and their mission is to make their parks accessible, so just keep in mind, they, they support increased accessibility. That's, that's why they have the parks, not to keep people out, but to make more accessible. And some of you may or may not know Carmel's had their own pedestrian tunnel under uh, Carmel Valley Road. It's quite a bit longer than ours. It's more remote than ours. It's been there for ten years. And yes, there are homeless people nearby it in encampments, but they've had zero incidents in the trail during that almost ten years now. That's in Carmel, not somewhere else. Okay, and just lastly, I'd say the uh, Nate Patrice want all pointed out that there's, if you start to look at the data, there's lots of data that supports um, crime not going out. It stays the same or it goes down. There's a reason why a lot of police chiefs and departments support putting trails in. Uh, what we're hearing is very common, and over time, it doesn't bear out. That's, that's the history. If we start to look at the data and the studies and the reports, and I'm purely to cast to do that, and the last thing I'd say is, let's vote. Let's do it. There are a lot of people who support the trail. We don't, obviously, and I think we need to have a more robust discussion, certainly more that's been fairly one-sided so far. There's another side. And I think we need to hear them both, and let's vote. I think it's uh, then we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Um, Scott? iPad Scott.
Hello, council members, Madam Mayor, News Manager. Scott Morgan here, thirty-two-year resident of Delray Oaks. I live right next to the park. And I am a fan of keeping the bike path on 218. I hear words like it would be a struggle, it's difficult, it would be a challenge. Well, that's what the people want. Let's have it be difficult. Let's not put it on residential street. I bought my home because I live on a quiet dead-end cul-de-sac. I'm selfish. I would like to keep it that way. I measured the width of 218 shoulder, and we have a good eight to ten feet of workable area. 218, if you drive down it, to me, is unsightly. You see a mile of dog-eared fencing on both sides of this street. It could use a major upgrade and beautification. That's my opinion. This is the first time I'm hearing about stormwater runoff on 218. What's going to happen when they pave the service road, when they pave by the garden center? There's still going to be stormwater runoff, and I'm not hearing anything about that on the current proposed plan. So my vote is 218. I know I've got the backing of the people. And I think that's all I have to say for tonight. Let me wait three seconds and see if I get another great idea. No, I did not. I hope everyone has a good evening. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Scott. Um, Susan Valani.
Yes, I am also a resident. Can you hear me? I'm also a resident and homeowner on Angeles Way, and um, obviously against this Fortag Trail running through my street. Um, and I know it's a public street, but it's still our street that we love on and like to walk our dogs on and use to our advantage as a homeowner that pays taxes to live here. Uh, no one is talking about the safety of having a wreck trail on a residential street. We hear about this non-safe atmosphere of 218. Uh, but I do feel like that presentation was the worst-case scenario, just to discourage everyone, scare everyone. Um, you know, to uh, you know, take away people's land behind their houses and all of that. It doesn't need to be a wreck trail on a highway. It could be a bike trail that connects to the wreck trail. Just like it doesn't make any sense for a wreck trail to be on a residential street. So I just feel like it doesn't need to be the side path. Um, people need to think about the safety of us driving out of our little side streets and having to worry about hitting people in wheelchairs or children on their trikes running, going down the street as depicted in the pictures that uh, Fortag has represented. Um, so that's really my main thing, uh, as far as, you know, concerns about this wreck trail. Uh, shouldn't be on a residential street. Everyone I tell is shocked and doesn't understand why anyone would even think of that. Well, I just don't understand how that's safe, and I don't understand the safety of it running in front of the Safeway entrance either. That makes no sense either. And also, I mean, if there were nice places to walk to, as someone else said earlier, it's not like we have, you know, a wonderful shopping area on Fremont Street. No one's going to walk there. You know, we barely even use it as owner, huh, residents here. Where do you go? Safeway, CVS? We don't go to motels. You know, there's nothing to do on Fremont Street that I'm going to walk to. So thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Uh, Ruth?
Hi, thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to address or ask about um, what hasn't been addressed here, and that is how do they mitigate the seventy-two-foot elevation difference from Canyon Delray to um, up Carlton to Plumas, there's a seventy-two-foot gain in elevation. We hear, uh, heard a lot about accessible connectivity. Um, I don't know how any disabled person um, would be able to make it up that, hike up that path, that street up to Plumas. Also, the path going down Plumas, excuse me, to Noche Buena. Um, we've heard um, time and time again how hard Caltrans is to deal with. Well, I don't know how easy AT&amp;T, PG&E are going to be to deal with, but directly in that path is an AT&amp;T installation of approximately twelve feet by twenty-four feet. It's like a little building, a little locked building. The path, there's no way it could go around that. It would have to go through it. There are PG&E power towers that I don't know how they're going to um, how they're going to get PG&E to sign off on this. Also, there are uh, a lot of oak trees down that path that they would have to mow down to get down there. So that specific part of the trail, um, I think is bogus to put, to put it uh, in the only way I know. Anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Ruth. Um, Ruth, I just texted you, um, uh, could you get ahold of Beth and see if something happened? Do you have Beth's contact?
Yeah, I just texted her.
Okay, thank you. Um, Scott Laxier. Scott?
Those buttons, excuse me, on those buttons.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Scott Laxier, and I am one of the many Delray Oaks residents who understands that a difference of opinion is incongruous with not being heard. It's a common refrain from those unhappy with current Fortag plans. As a thirty-five-year advocate of sustainable city planning, the city leaders and planners of Fortag have demonstrated to be an inclusive group of citizens and professionals. I, it's true that no, the planners of Fortag have no desire actions towards destroying Frog Pond as signs around town deceive. Indeed, they are concerned with equity, sustainability, and more than words, the future of Delray Oaks after we're gone. Imagine the audacity in this cynical world that citizens care about strangers that future generations are considered through policy beyond illustrious words. I am behind the Fortag plan as it is. I see no thoughtful alternatives. I appreciate the professional and comprehensive efforts of Fortag planners and proponents, and for your service to the Delray Oaks community and beyond. And you know, someone here mentioned selfishness, and as a community, that is not sustainable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Frank, I was able to change your name.
I saw that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Um, and yes,
I'm here too.
That was my wife, Vicky.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thi- this is unfortunate, and it's, it's unfortunate that, that our previous mayor, Mayor Edlin, was part of the beginning stages of the project. And it's also unfortunate that our city managers didn't demand more due diligence in regards to this project, and um, and about a year ago, maybe a little longer than that, Mayor Kerr signed the initial agreement, and it was unanimously approved by the then-city council. We have a new city council now. Only two of our current council members took part in that unanimous vote. We have two new council members who are not part of that unanimous vote. But what is more unfortunate is that our city leaders did not take into consideration that the majority of residents do not want this project built in our city. It's inconceivable to me that the people who were elected to represent the residents of this city are agreeing to build a project that the majority of residents do not want. Now, it's understandable why the previous administrations have embraced the Fortag, Tamsi, Caltrans project. Because on the surface, it sounds like a noble idea. But that was before all of the details began to rise above the surface. Now that these details are out in the open, the residents have offered a compromise. But it sounds as if Fortag, Tamsi, Caltrans are not willing to do that. And that is a travesty. What could have been a project that will unite our residents will be one that divides us even more than we already are. But it's not too late. Our city council has the right, the opportunity, and the obligation to represent the residents. All you have to do is pay attention to what is going on out there. This project will determine how we all will be remembered. We don't want to do anything that will negatively impact our residents, whether it's Angeles or 218. So it's really simple. Find a compromise, find a good compromise. We'll all pay, or we will all pay a huge price in the future. And as a postscript, I am a geomatics engineer. I've worked with Caltrans civil engineers for more than forty years. I will address the presentation at a future date. So with that, I would just like to say, let's find something that works, and I think we can all be happy and celebrate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I am not seeing any additional hands raised. If you have a comment on this, now is the time. Uh, uh, Ruth, any response from Beth?
Um, no, I have not gotten any.
Okay, so um, unfortunately, we, well, not unfortunately, but we have um, further work to do. Um, so what I will do for Beth is offer her the opportunity to be able to um, provide her comments in writing, unless that's her. Um, but we're, at this point, I'm going to close public comments and bring it back to the council. Um, and let's begin with uh, Vice Mayor Lynn Tell.
I'm still of the uh, feeling I should not comment until we hear from the FPPC regarding recusing.
Okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Gagliotti?
Basically the same, but I, uh, but I will say this is that it was very, very informative tonight. Um, and, and without offering an opinion, I think it might be a good idea to, to take up um, to, to maybe the council to consider, and I'm speaking just as a, as a resident, the council to consider maybe that, that forum where there's a formal, a formal presentation from, you know, from the residents, so. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not uh, offering that as a, as a motion of any more. you know, from the residents. So, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not offering that as a motion of any more.
Yeah, okay. There's no motion on this. But I hear you. Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, well, first off, thanks once again to all the residents for your comments. They're across the board, very good comments. Also to Lindsay, thank you for your presentation. Very well done. I just want folks to remember why I brought this item to the council. And it's based on what I talked about last council meeting. In that, what I'm trying to do is get a compromise. Realizing that there is so much common ground amongst residents, and you know, I, I talk to the fact that the majority of our residents support the Fortag objectives of providing a safe biking and walking route, getting people out of their cars, addressing climate change, across the board. People are in agreement on that. What I tried to do is come up with something that would work, so it's not an all-or-nothing situation, which it's kind of segregated into. When I look at that, when I look at the, the 218 route, the four points that I made, the first one being that it doesn't fully support Fortag's objectives. And I realize that the 218 alternative doesn't in most places, not all, but in most places. And my point there is the larger objective for Fortag is to get people, pedestrians, bicyclists, from the coast out to Fort Ord. And Delray Oaks is the connective tissue to that, and that's why it's so critical. That's why we're the first in a long line of potential routes that will be addressed out there. And it's the hardest route. And because of that, it, it requires some, some critical and creative thinking. And I just want Fortag, the folks at Fortag, to realize that maybe they look at Delray Oaks differently as simply the connective tissue between those places. The second thing was that it's not wide enough. And Lindsay, you did a good job of pointing out the challenges that are associated with that. But you essentially used a template that covered the entire area. And I agree with a lot of our residents that you can look at different parts of 218 where you wouldn't have to apply that template necessarily. You can use the existing ground that's there to, that already has the, the width. I, I just, I would, I would reference the area past Safeway where it was identified that thirteen oak trees would have to be removed. That area is very similar to what you are encountering on Carlton, for example. And those are areas that you can mitigate around those trees, for example. So I think what our residents are looking for i- in this particular case is not necessarily a template that goes from Safeway to the Frog Pond and just says, we need this amount of width, and we need this amount of shoulder and drainage and everything else. That you look at it only in those spots that are choke points. And there's about a half a mile where from Rosita to that, the last house before City Hall is really the area of the most concern, where you have to get extremely creative. But in other spots, it is a bit more feasible to, to put the trail in without having to implement some of those things you identified in your template. And once again, it's very difficult. But it, it's, it's one of those things where I would hope that the engineers would find a way realizing what's at stake here, and that it comes down to a potentially an all-or-nothing thing. And I would hate for something to potentially fail in our city that would impact the rest of the trail and, and Fortag's ability to continue. Now, the third piece was the safety. And I actually liked that photo that you put up of the stretch along the highway in Ventura. And maybe that would be appropriate within that half a mile area, that choke point that I mentioned. That's, that's a great example of how you're gonna separate cars from pedestrians and cyclists. So in terms of safety, not only do I look at that, but folks also look at what was created on, on Fremont, where you have essentially cars right next to pedestrians and cyclists as it is. So maybe something like that as well in, in a design that would be appropriate for Highway 218. And then the fourth piece was that Caltrans would not go along with it, wouldn't approve it. I agree with, I, I forget who had mentioned it, but it, it was asking for a Caltrans representative to be part of this process. I would love to hear from them. And you know, I, I have often heard that Caltrans won't support this, that, and the other thing. But it would be good to hear from them to see what they have to say on it. And then the last thing I'll say is, I, I agree with the point that Don Gruber brought forward, having a presentation, a formal presentation, really where Tamsi and Fortag can take a critical look at it, a creative look, to say, how can we make this thing happen as opposed to, like I said, providing just that template over the top of 218 that suggests that it's infeasible. So Mayor, I'll send it back to you, but those are my thoughts. And you know, ultimately, I would support a, a formal presentation that addresses those sorts of issues.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley?
I'm gonna recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay. So firstly, I want to thank Tamsi for pulling this together very quickly and presenting your knowledge about this path and the limitations. We have been talking about doing a presentation with Tamsi and the Parks District, which is critical because we hear a lot of concerns about the Frog Pond. And they have thus far been in support, so it's important for their voices to be heard as well. And so we were hoping to do that in the beginning of September, but this kind of, this attention kind of waylaid that a little bit. So we're going to go back to the drawing board, get those folks together. And, and we'll talk about how, you know, some kind of a public presentation could be a part of that. So if there aren't any other, I did not hear a lot of questions outside. I did not write down any questions outside of really the workshop and say, Lynn's, you know, wanting to compare some numbers. And I think that can easily be dealt with, with the workshop that we've been talking about. So if there's no other comments from the council, we need to move on.
Mayor Kerr? One minute. While, a couple of things. Yes, the, at the workshop that you were talking about, we were planning to present the alignment as it is currently proposed off of 218. We intentionally did not do a comparison at this project because, or at, at this juncture because we wanted to look independently at SR 218 and what those impacts would be. We do have the numbers and the impacts and the, all of the similar things that we had for the 218 alternative for the other alignment. But again, we just wanted to focus on, on this and not get into the discussion of what the current alignment is. But at that workshop, we will have all of that presented and be more than happy to, to walk through that with you. In regards to Caltrans, I was able to pull up our internal meeting notes. And I have two quotes from two different people at Caltrans, if it would be all right for me to read them.
Please do.
All right, this first one is from Dario, Dario Senor. And it says, "If the intersection does not mean warrants, Caltrans would not support a new signal at Carlton. They would support an enhance, an enhancement such as a rectangular rapid flashing beacon." It's not a, not a Hawk system. That's just a little flashy beacon that you push for the existing crosswalk. They would not want to encourage a hundred percent of the new path users to use the existing crosswalk. So the tunnel is preferred as the main crossing. In regards to the intersection and ICE or intersection control evaluation, step one is recommended before any decisions are made on that intersection control type. And then the next comment comes from Claudia Espino. And hers says, "There, there are several constrained areas on SR 218 where a Class 1 would not fit. It is better suited for an off-road alignment where possible to avoid conflicts such as the alignment you've selected. For the crossing at Carlton, it does not serve the same purpose of a multi-use trail that you're trying to accommodate with this project. So this tunnel is the safer and preferred way to cross to SR 218 for a Class 1 path."
Mayor, if I could just address a few things with that. Lindsay, thank you for that. What, what it does show is that a, I guess, a, a improved crosswalk is a potential option in that area. And as far as the Class 1 bike trail is concerned, we realized that. And that goes back to the first point that there are portions of 218 that simply won't support that Class 1-type bike trail. And it would have to be something that's, that's more narrow. And then the other thing that I'll say is that I would hope that the folks from Tamsi, Fortag, Caltrans at, at this next meeting that we have, come to us with an eye towards being creative and trying to find a way to make it happen as opposed to showing us why it can't happen. And I think that's so important. And I think a lot, I, I know a lot of residents, that's what they're looking for. So please, as we move forward to that, what we're looking for is an honest effort realizing what's at stake to try and find a creative way to make that alternative happen.
Lindsay, thank you again for the wonderful presentation and the clarification on Caltrans. And I look forward to working on the next presentation and providing further clarity. So, and thank you. I know there's quite a few Tamsi folks and quite a few Fortag folks. And thank you again for pulling this together so quickly for us. All right, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council have, and would like to pull any item?
Mayor, oh, Mayor Kerr, I just have a, there's a couple typos on C2.
Okay, we'll pull that. Mr. Gagliotti?
Yeah, I mean, this is just, this was to Roberta's comment, A1 through 3, review the minutes. And, and I don't know, but let's just pull that, and then we'll talk about it.
Okay, so can we, I will entertain a motion to approve all the remainder?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the, with the exclusion of A1 through 3 and C2. Yeah, C2.
Okay.
Your Honor, if, if, if I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. But if you would please go to the public for the, for the consent agenda to see if they want to pull any of the items.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. Does anyone in the public, would anyone like to pull an agenda item? What this means is we take something off of the consent agenda to discuss. Otherwise, it stays on the consent agenda and we vote on it en masse. Karen, do you see any hands?
No.
Okay, I do not. So we're gonna come back to the council. Alex, can we move forward with the motion that was made?
I don't know if it was seconded.
Alex, was that a yes?
That's a yes. I, I didn't capture the second. I'm not sure if someone seconded it or not, but if they did, could they?
I, I did.
Okay.
Okay. Karen, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lindell?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So the consent agenda minus all of A and C2 passes. What I'd like to do is pull C2 first. Ms. Shirley, go ahead and explain what you have.
It's, it's quick. The first page of the resolution, in the middle of the page in big block type, we need to take out San City and replace it with the City of Delray Oaks.
Oh my gosh.
And then on, on page six of the seventeen pages, I just had a question. Seven CI is missing. I didn't know if there needed to be something there.
Yeah, we, we actually caught that too. We'll, we'll share that with Darby. So that was a document we got from the county.
Got it.
We'll share that with Darby so he can correct that.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's it.
Sorry, I didn't catch the other one.
No worries, Karen. That's okay.
I'll get it. It's on page six.
So this was an item that I believe the Board of Supervisors approved today. And so we need to get this to them, like, immediately. So that, are you pleased with the result, Ms. Shirley?
Yes, yes. In fact, we'll do it all together.
Okay. So Mr. Gagliotti, what would you like to do, A1, 2, and 3?
Well, I'd like to kind of open it up for, I'd like to ask the city manager, Mr. Gerton, what he recommends we should do on that. We, we've had, when, when the public is commenting on, on minute corrections, I, well, I know what, I know what we do when council has it, but I don't know what we do with, with the public. So I'm looking for, for you to help us with that.
Yeah, I haven't seen before where we've had comment from the county, from the community about how they were quoted in, in minutes. In all the jurisdictions I'm, I've worked in, we've actually done action minutes. So we don't take the time to quote people because we already have that as the video that's attached. So I'd like to move a little bit more towards action minutes going forward. I believe, Karen, you captured the comments that were made by the community. So we, we can make those amendments and bring the amended minutes back to you if that's what the council would prefer.
In this case, yeah. But then I guess the going forward, you'd get like a, a little better understanding of how the action minutes work, and maybe we go, we adopt that.
Okay, yeah. Going forward, yeah, the action minutes would really follow more just like the, the agenda and just capture the vote that was taken and the motion that was made, who seconded it, and then the vote. Action. And then if anybody wants detail on what happened, they can go and watch the video.
Okay, so let's maybe, Mayor, maybe we can agendize that and we can, we can adopt that, that, that new, that new recording.
So can we have a conversation? We need.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying, it's not, it's not on our agenda right now, so we can't actually, I, I don't know if we can actually discuss, discuss that, but.
You just pulled an item off of the consent agenda.
Right.
So we can discuss it.
Okay, all right. Well, and, and, and the point was, was to fix the initial, the initial issue. To fix the future issue. I mean, if we can do it, I mean, let's do it now. But what I pulled the agenda for was to fix the immediate issue.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, Karen, can you go in and watch the video and make sure that those, the comments that she mentioned are corrected? Bring that back. Okay, and then bring that back to us for approval next meeting. And then I will work with the city manager on agendizing this, perhaps bringing an example, something like that where we can discuss. Okay, does that?
That satisfies me. All that satisfies me.
Does anyone else on the council have a comment, question, anything about consent and that one particular item? Okay, not seeing any. So, so we need to approve these two items. So I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the items A through 3 with the. I make a motion that we approve the items eight through three with the with the review by staff, and then they're bringing it back to us.
I second.
Okay. What, this is a, do I need to add anything about the the bringing the staff direction? Bringing the future state or future policy or?
So I'm gonna ask Alex, can we do that here? Or can I just?
Right.
I hear you, and John and I will work on that.
Yeah, I think I think that that would be the appropriate path, Mayor, is to is to work with the city manager on that. And if I might, Mayor, to the the other, if the the motion maker, and I apologize if if it was mentioned, to include adoption of C two, eight, C two.
Oh.
As it was also.
I accept, I accept the amendment, yes.
As do I. Okay, Karen, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to old business, and it's the airport roundtable letter. I'd like to turn this over to our city manager to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Chief Hoin has the lead on this, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to him as he's better versed in this issue than I am.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Council. Over the course of the last several months, I've, as the acting city manager, I spoke with several council members who expressed concerns that residents have had with issues surrounding the airport, specifically related to health, safety, noise, and quality of life issues. I offered to reach out to the airport in an attempt to informally set up a more formal process to address those issues and start a dialogue and conversation with the airport district and help educate both sides on what their concerns and or responsibilities are and in what can be done to address some of those issues. And also inform our residents what the airport's authority is versus things like the FAA and in in other issues that they may not be able to address. Those informal attempts did not result in any meeting or path forward. So at council's direction, after speaking with council members individually, it was decided to draft an airport, a request to the airport for a formal way to discuss these issues. One of those formal ways that's mentioned in the letter is in is an airport community roundtable. And that is a FAA-approved and recommended way for airports to start dialogues and solve problems with their neighboring jurisdictions and communities. What you have in the packet is a copy of that draft letter to come before council for approval to send to the airport district. And if you've had a chance to review it, and if you have any questions on that letter, it is just an avenue to formally request and get a response from them to see if we can open that dialogue and address our community's concerns.
Thank you, sir. So let's start with the council. Ms. Lintel, any questions?
No, I have no questions. I think the letter is good.
Okay. Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, same. I think I think it's great. The the sooner we can get, we can get together with the airport and rebuild that relationship, I think, the better for our community.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, I completely agree. I did have a question, though. It talks in the letter that there, you know, we're looking to partner with airport district and other jurisdictions. I I'm just wondering what other cities are doing this in addition to us? Or what other entities are are also trying to to be involved with this?
So I can answer. I have spoken with several different mayors and several supervisors. Supervisor Root Askew also wrote a letter requesting a community roundtable. My suggestion would be that this letter is CC'd to both District Four and Five supervisors and all Peninsula mayors, as well as the FAA Regional Point of Contact. So for example, San Francisco has one, San Jose has one, Oakland has one, and it's all neighboring jurisdictions.
Okay, I I get that, but how many have done it? How many, how many other cities or jurisdictions have reached out to the airport with something similar? I guess is my question.
I'm I'm unaware, but I know Monterey is in a lawsuit with them. And like I said, our supervisor did.
Okay, so I I guess what I'm trying to get to with all of it is it's just Delray Oaks and the airport as as a roundtable. No other cities have said, we want to be part of this roundtable. Is that, is that right?
No, the model would be the entire peninsula.
Okay, I, I, I understand that. I'm just saying, you you don't know if any other cities have sent letters to the airport to try and be involved with this same roundtable.
I have had informal support for the idea, but no, no one has also recommended.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Shirley.
I have no questions. Thank you. It's a great letter.
Okay, I don't have any questions either, so let's go out to the public. Anybody have a a public comment about the airport letter? Mr. Clark?
Good evening. Jim Clark, Via Verde, Delray Oaks. City Manager Gerton, just some background before I share what I consider edits that might be under consideration is, I see in the packet you are recommending the letter for approval. And well, yes, it's a good thing to do some sort of lever letter. I think it's important you know that in the 2020 election, this is a problem of Mayor Kerr's and Councilwoman Shirley's making as they made themselves verbose at the airport meetings and with the no road DRO campaign that Councilwoman Shirley headed. They curated the problem, and now they're trying to correct it, which which is fine, good for them. But I would just think that maybe a letter with a slightly different tone might go a lot farther rather than trying to wield a stick. And so here is my proposed different tone and edits that you might consider. To the chairman, first of all, I, Allison Kerr, the mayor of Delray Oaks and Councilmember Shirley, now realize, having been seated on the council, that our actions during the campaign of 2020 were out of our our passion and perhaps short-sighted. We have seen from sitting in these chairs for several months that we shouldn't have been so single-minded and close-minded in regards to the roundtable trox that the previous administration was having with the airport district. The previous council and administration were being good neighbors and at least sitting at the table and talking. And for that, we apologize. We realize we have probably irreparably damaged any conversation you could possibly have with the two of us. However, there are some residential concerns that we would like to see addressed and hope that you might consider sitting down with any other council members of your choosing to see if any of these residential concerns listed below might be addressed. We realize the best way to establish a consistent and open avenue of communication is to model that, to be humble, consistent, and open with you. We realize you have a business to run and responsibilities to a much higher authority, the FAA, to answer to. And we would never begin to tell you how to run your business. But if we had an understanding as to the reasoning of the decisions, perhaps we could use that information to claim the concern, to calm the concerns of those of us that chose to purchase a house near the airport that is a critical link to the economy of the Monterey Peninsula and whose tax dollars help provide us, many of us, the amenities that we enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comments? Karen, do you see any? I'm not seeing any hands.
Nope.
Okay, so let's bring it back to the council. Any comments, questions, Ms. Shirley?
I first like to state that I really like the idea of an airport roundtable because it is a public meeting and it's transparent. And that was the problem with the meetings that were had in the previous administration is that they were not public meetings and we were not notified of them. So I love this plan, and so I'd like to actually make a motion that we accept this letter and also send it to the Peninsula jurisdictions, those mayors, as well as the District Four and District Five county supervisors.
I'll second it.
Okay, Karen, or any comments, last minute comments from the council?
Yeah, my only point, Mayor, would be let's do all we can to get those other jurisdictions in on it. I I think that will be helpful. So it's not just a roundtable of the airport and and Delray Oaks.
Of course, yes, I we, I I agree, yes. So any other comments from the council? Pat?
Very, thank you.
Okay, Karen, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. So the roundtable letter passes unanimously. Thank you for that. We have no new business today. We have a staff report from our new city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, since I've only been here for two weeks. Just real quickly, I have been getting up to speed on a lot of issues. We do have a lot of issues here in the city that I need to be brought up to speed on. There's a lot happening here for such a small town, which is a great thing. And as we all mentioned before, Jeff and Chris did a great job keeping things going as well as the other staff. To that end, the administrative staff, what they've been working on is me. So they've been working on training me. They've been great. We have a lot of ideas for how we want to move forward. And for my next city manager's report, we'll bring that back. For Public Works, Ron, Ron continues to do amazing work for the city. You probably all noticed that he's done excellent work cleaning up the public works yard down below us here. Looking great. He's got the shed all fixed up and every, everything moved back into the shed. Got some things set up for the chief's use down there. Cleaned out some of the stuff that was sitting outside visible so that it looks nicer. He's been working on getting us bids so that we can work on the stairs between work and Portola, get that work done, which has needed to be done for a long time. So he's keeping a lot of those projects going, and we'll have more to report to you next month on that. PD has been doing a lot of excellent work in terms of investigations on some of the stuff that's been going on in the city. They're not at a point where we can talk about that yet, but hopefully next month we'll have some great stuff that the chief can share next month as well. So other than that, really looking forward to working with everyone on moving things forward.
Okay, thanks. And those of you may notice that the council reports are not on the agenda. Because they're in writing, we're gonna have to figure out how it's actually listed on the agenda, whether they're correspondence or something like that, but we're working on that. And then number twelve is correspondence. Please take a look at the agenda with all of the reports from our various folks. On that, we're on to closed session. And what we're going to do is start with public comment for anything having to do with the five different options or off. Yeah, options or topics that we're going to be discussing, excuse me. Number one is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code five four nine five six dot nine D four, two potential cases. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Michelle Ball versus City of Delray Oaks at all Monterey County Superior Court, case number twenty C V zero zero two nine two six. Three is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, California Native Plant Society v. Fort Ord Reuse Authority at all Monterey County Superior Court, case number twenty C V zero zero one five two nine. Number four, public employee performance evaluation for our chief of police. Number five, conference with real property negotiator properties, APN oh three one one nine one oh two eight and AP one two five nine zero one one zero two five. Agency negotiator is John Gerton, negotiating parties, City of Delray Oaks and Monterey Peninsula Regional Parks District, under negotiation price and terms of payment. And so any public comment on any of those items? Okay, seeing none, what we're going to do is go into closed session. I have a feeling this is gonna take a little while, so for those of you in attendance, you are welcome to stay on the line and hear the report out when that occurs. And if not, we will see you in September. Okay, well, thank you for those of you that hung in there with us. I'd like to turn it over to our city manager for a report out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to the five items on closed session, updates were provided to the council, council provided, provided direction to myself and the city manager, but no reportable action was taken.
Okay, so our next meeting is on Tuesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Our next regular meeting, we may have a special one in between that, if we're able to pull it together. So Tuesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one at six P M. On that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night.